Now, we just want to show off what we've got for Christmas.
(laughing).
Yeah, I realized I needed a new shirt.
I just wanted to show off eight pounds I lost.
(laughing).
I wanted to show off the eight pounds I gained.
(laughing).
It's work.
It's work.
Okay. I just figured out how to drive it. Okay. All right. Couple of months ago, when we first talked about this, we looked at what the county had in our adopter ordinance that was first adopted in the late 80s, at the time when US 17 South was opening up. It's been the same ordinance for the course of the past 20, almost 25 years now. All the major changes we had was a few years back where we added to accommodate the changes in technology, when we added electronic changeable copy signs. It's just mentioned in those ordinance, and they're allowed in the same places, but all of their signs are allowed. So what the planning board did was we looked at what we have in our ordinance, what DOT has for the similar requirements, and then the memo that you've got there is a planning board recommendation of whether we should make a change or not make a change, or just leave it, sort of leave things like that. Of course, our ordinance still applies to all areas of the county outside of the jurisdiction of towns.
Thank you.
Very much.
(laughing).
Pardon me. Excuse me.
Well, yeah. And of course, the DOT rules apply to all areas, both inside and outside of towns. We apply our ordinance within 1,000 feet of a highway on both sides. DOT prohibits signs beyond 660 feet. So we, the way, that's a little bit different. We regulate up to 1,000, allow them beyond 1,000. They regulate them up to 660, but don't allow anything beyond 660.
So are you saying that ours is less restrictive?
I think in that case it is, because we allow, if somebody was at 665, we would still control it. The state would say no, and then I guess that once you get beyond 660, the state says, no signs. If you give it, if a sign is visible from the highway, you don't want that. There is never a sign that's not visible, so. Your location.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Let me go back to that if I could.
Okay.
If Wayne County established 1,000 feet, would the state's 660 override ours?
I believe so, yes.
So actually, it doesn't do us any good to go to 1,000 if the state is going-
We could change ours to 660, or we leave like this, it's not going to matter. State's not going to issue a permit either way.
You're right, because the state has to issue a permit.
Right.
And they're not going to issue a permit if it's beyond the 660.
Right.
So not to have any confusion, I would, I would say you need to almost have it at the 660, because-
Go ahead and mirror it.
Yeah, because you are going to lead people to believe that they could, in fact, put one at 750 feet.
Just one question, just to make sure that we're, kind of, was it, is there any other place that 1,000 feet would be appropriate that the state did not control? Was that, is that how it might have gotten in there?
Well, the state, of course, they control signs along federal aid highways.
Right.
US 70, US 117, US 13. Ours includes NC routes also, really any secondary of the county. We, we'd control the billboards. If somebody went out on 581 North or 222, and wanted to put up a billboard, our ordinance would cover that. The state would not acquire a permit in those cases.
Oh, they won't?
And somebody could be coming in that way.
So if you, say, the intersection of 222 and 795 up at Fremont.
Well, maybe-
They would patrol a sign at 660 from 795.
Right.
If a person wanted to put up a big enough billboard, it would still perform with our ordinance. At 665, it would be along 222, it might be still visible from 795.
Point well taken. So do you suppose maybe we need to clarify by just saying 1,000 feet on non-US highways?
Um-
I'm trying to make it as clear as possible, so people don't get confused and say, well, your ordinance says I can put it 1,000 feet.
Well, I think we probably could clarify that, that the, up to 660, or prohibit it beyond 660 along federalized highways. I guess I would probably need to talk with the state about that, because if we put, Mr. Cervantes said, we use an example. I got to thinking, if they're going to still prohibit it beyond 660, no matter where it is.
So you don't think it's really necessary to clarify, just leave it as it is?
Well, I'll check with them and see if, if the example I used, a sign would be allowed in that situation. If it is, you're probably right, we need to do some clarification there.
And kind of, if the 1,000 is still appropriate, would it help the public to put an example of a road?
I mean, just to- Or if I could do a road, or just have a drawing or something?
Something like that, that they would know that.
I think council had some comment, but I was just going to say the state can always change the 660. So if they changed to, say, 800, then you'd be more restrictive than them, so I don't think I'd change it.
Just leave it just like it is?
And when the people want permits, so they explain to them what they can do.
Well, they're going to have to get a permit from us and also a permit from the state. If they can't get it from the state, then it doesn't do them any good to get a permit from us, does it?
(laughing).
Okay.
And anybody that came in would be warned about that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Next, your location. We currently prohibit signs along all freeways. This would be 117 South currently, but it would be the new US 70, once it's opened up. But other routes, signs must be within 800 feet of a commercial activity which has access to the highway. So like along the current US 70, if someone has a building out there, a mobile home sales lot, or a near set sweepstakes place, or a used car lot, a sign that makes it qualifying business, you know, unzoned area, and a sign can be placed on either side of that, if there's space. What the state says is signs are prohibited along scenic highways. They make the mention of other fully controlled highways. But they must be in a commercial or industrial area, and not within 500 feet of an interchange. So what, the way they handle it is, if it's in unzoned areas, because their ordinance is designed to cover the whole state. If you look at our map for just a moment, you'll see that on the zoning map, most of the county is not in a zoned area. The white area that you see is not zoned, the colors are one zone or another. We've got on the map the proposed US 70, and you can see there is some zoning along that, that's in Goldsboro's jurisdiction, some that we have, and there's still, there are some unzoned areas on the west end, out near 581, and on the east end over near Eastern Wayne. We've got zoning, community shopping zoning at the intersection of where US 13 and US 70 would cross, and at the, it was only a place the county would have a commercial type zone, where it crossed at the intersection of Parkstown Road and US 70, we have residential zone in that area. This is where we have one of the proposed changes that the planning board is seeing, is that in allowing or adding in zoned areas, outdoor advertising signs may be placed in areas zoned, community shopping, airport, light industry, heavy industry, or airport industry. Signs in these areas do not need to be within 800 feet of a qualifying commercial or industrial activity. And what the state has, if it's in an area that is zoned commercial, then their requirements for being in proximity of a qualified business is not an issue either. So like out here on, at US 70 and 13, where we have community shopping, that would make that a qualifying location for a sign, for both us and the state, because it's zoned for business.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Page.
So still, it's prohibited along all freeways, you know, we're not changing that.
We would-
That's the recommendation you're trying to make?
That's, right. But you know, if we want to change that, if you want to allow signs there, then you'd have to do away with that part also. Now, I think what the planning board is saying is, you would allow it along freeways if it's in a zoned area. So they are changing it somewhat.
I had a hard time seeing the map. Yeah, show me where 13 and the intersection is there.
This is, this blue area here-
Okay.
Is where the intersection of 13 and 70 would be. So in this blue area, if somebody had the location they wanted to put up a sign, they could put it up, and it would be both the state and the local requirements. Right over here, if it's an unzoned area, signs would still be prohibited there, because it's an unzoned area.
If it's unzoned, it's allowed.
No, exactly.
If it's zoned, it's not allowed.
So if it's, if it's not zoned, then it's not allowed, period?
Well, it's not allowed along a freeway in our ordinance, and it has to be within a certain number of feet of a qualifying business that has access to the highway. Well, there's not going to be any access to the highway in that area. So that's going to be a non-issue for the state. So what they're going to have is a service road that protects your place and sign. There's a new road right here, that's providing access to some of this property back here, there's a road here. That somebody might come along this farm road here, in the community shopping zone, and make that a qualifying location.
You don't have where the proposed, or is that the, the new highway there?
This is the new highway.
Okay, that's the new highway, okay.
Right here.
All right, see, the white area, go, go back there to the white area. That white area is un, nope, back over, between the blue, oh, come on, come on, back door to the door. Come on, come on, right in there.
Right.
All that white area there, you cannot put a sign according to the state, because it's not zoned?
That's correct.
According to the state or according to ours?
According to-
The state.
According to both.
That's right. But if we change that to allow it in that white area, you would actually have to zone 1,000 feet on the other side of the highway, in the white area.
Or some areas, or-
You've got to have it zoned for the state to agree to it, is that right?
If we zone it for business or industry, the state will allow it.
Or you could zone it, well, yeah, community shopping, airport, light industry, but it has to be zoned commercial or industrial for the state.
Yes. So because it's, what- What would happen in this area, right here, because this is the intersection of Wayne Memorial and 70, where it's going to be, it's right here. So from there across here, over to here, if you came in and sold all that community shopping, or light industry or something, signs would be allowed there by both us and the state.
Right. Can I, can I follow up here? Well, if that is rezoned to commercial, community shopping-
Yes.
It would not change the value of the property?
Correct.
It would not?
Right.
So taxes would not increase on that area that you're rezoning, would it?
As I understand it, where they tax, it would not.
Until it's developed.
Right, they tax based on the current use. It would make it more attractive for somebody that would connect it for commercial use, because it's already zoned commercial. Now, the downside to community shopping is that it doesn't allow any residential use in that area.
Oh, really?
So if somebody, if we, if we put in that blue all the way to the west there, all the way over to Wayne Memorial, and somebody comes in, then they want to put in a subdivision there, then they'd have to get it changed to a residential zone. Or if they came in and wanted to build a house, they'd have to have it changed to a residential zone.
Which is not difficult to do, is it?
No, it's not, it's just a process, but, uh, but if you came and put community shopping all the way from 13, all the way in the county's jurisdiction, all the way to the west there, over to Wayne Memorial, then that would open that area up for signage.
But isn't it, thanks, even if it was changed to commercial, the sign can't go up, the sign's got to stay within a certain, just some sort of-
It still has to meet the spacing requirements between signs and the size of the signs, all that still has to be complied with. What this would do is remove the requirements that it'd be within so many feet of a business.
Correct.
The state has that in place to cover unzoned areas. What sometime, what they don't want to happen, and they've got a long section describing how to do that, they don't have somebody pull up their, their truck on Friday afternoon, selling fish out of the back, and saying that's a qualifying business, and then having two signs on their property on either side of that location. It's got to be a business that's there all the time. And so if along the service road there, somebody, at the end of it, if it's in a zoned area, that would be a non-issue. But at the, where Hair Road crosses 70, if that was zoned community shopping, then you'd have the corners there that could potentially be locations. You wouldn't have to worry about qualifying business if it's in a biz zone. So I think if, if that's the goal, was to allow more signage along the highway, then the way to do it is to zone that area for some kind of business or industry.
And the least restrictive of that zoning to, would be a community shopping?
Yes, and that's more likely something that's going to be, particularly around your interchanges, that's going to have the uses that you would normally see at an interchange anyway. Service stations, food marks, restaurants, gas stations, hotels, all out of the community shopping.
That certainly would be my goal, because obviously this is my area, and I'm getting a lot of calls from businesspeople about advertising there. And when this road opens up, I'm so afraid that we're going to lose so much tax revenue. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. But we have gotten market Wayne County, you know, if we're going to grow. So the idea of the community shopping, bringing it up over that line, seems like the right way to go to me. So just go 1,000 feet on the either side of the highway, if it's unzoned and zoned?
On the south side, you won't be able to go 1,000 feet, because part of that's in Goldsboro's jurisdiction.
That's true.
Because you have to go up to their line and stop, because if you see the lighter blue area just south of the highway there-
Right.
That is, all that's Goldsboro's jurisdiction.
So Goldsboro controls that, okay. So, so in other words, signs on the blue area over there, you could probably put a sign there?
In the Goldsboro's area?
Yes.
They prohibit signs along freeways.
Yeah. Oh, they do?
Yes.
And they just change their ordinance?
I don't know.
It's been a few years back.
Well, that's what I mean, that had always been.
Yeah, always been.
They, they changed it to prohibit them along this highway.
Well, I think that's the only way I can, I can solve the state requirement, would be actually in the unzoned areas along that highway, that we have that 1,000 feet be zoned as community shopping.
And of course, what the state, in doing that, will look at, if you, if you have an area, they're going to look at, making sure the zoning is not being done just for the purpose of the signs. They don't want you to come out there and zone the area 25 feet wide, either side of the highway.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
Right, but you know, it's what you're saying, 1,000 feet or a quarter mile or something like that, either side, then you've got some, some land there that if somebody wanted to put up a business, it's already in a business zone.
What's the downside?
Not allowing any houses, you've got to find a balance there.
Question. A lot of that land probably is still agricultural.
I'm sure the majority of it is, yes.
If we changed it to community shopping, it wouldn't affect them in terms of them being able to continue to use that as agricultural land?
No, sir, yeah. If you changed it to anything, it would not affect the current use, except for the overall-
And it would not increase their property tax?
No, sir.
I just want to be very clear about this, too. Well, we don't want the room full of Pittsburghs. No, of course not.
As I presented, zoning is based on current use, not future use. You could zone it for gold mine if you wanted to, but if they're out there just growing soybeans, that's what it's going to be taxed for.
Yeah, I just got some folks that are, who would like to lease some there and put, you know, a sign there to get some of their property back that they lost, that they feel like they lost. But I don't want them to lose their rights to be able to farm anything out there, or raise their taxes.
That would not change.
And, um- Can, can you produce us a map, show us what that would look like in regards to that zoning boundary and so forth, or later we'll assess? I got a copy of this one myself. Wait, couldn't you zone it parcel by parcel at time needed?
Well, the problem is, it would need to connect to something that's already zoned, or you've got to zone a minimum of 640 acres when we create a new area. So I couldn't go over there to just Hair Road and zone one corner of that if somebody wanted to put up a sign, because it doesn't connect with anything else.
Okay, so whose, whose ordinance is that?
That's, that's the state law.
That's state law.
Yeah. When, when the county is zoning areas, like around schools, around airports, the minimum area that we can zone is 640 acres. But we, once that area is established, we can add on to that another 10 acres, or 15 or 100 at a time. And that's what I would see you doing here with the community shopping. We would take that to the west, as far as we need to or want to, to, to cover that area.
For schools, it's a half mile?
Cool, yeah, because 640 acres is a square mile. So if you go about a half mile either side of a school, you've got the acreage, that's how we come up with the school zones that we have.
Tax liability for the property owner, but at least have additional flexibility where they could use that land-
Well, in a way, it would, if I put in a community shopping, it would add to one thing that they can't do now.
That's true.
They can't put up a sign now, as it is, because it doesn't, that location doesn't have access to that highway.
Right, right.
But if it was zoned community shopping, or industry or something, then that would make that land along the highway potential sign locations.
Man, looking after you.
Okay.
Well, we're not making any decisions today, but I'd like to see that. What y'all start?
Well, what I'll do is, I'll work with the planning board, and we'll come back with a zoning map revision that will show that area in a zone area, and also the area out on the west end-
Yes, well, of course.
-out toward 581 also, because you've got the same issues out there.
Well, you're right.
The 581, where the two highways tie together, there's no zoning there also.
Kind of got all the way to the county line, don't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, you tie back in with the existing highway at some point, so the current rules are covered that way. And we can extend the zoning all the way to the county line, but I'm not sure you're, that may be more than what you want to take on right now.
Yeah, well, I don't know what the folks, I don't know what the folks in the county are thinking, I'm not talking to them.
I think you might take advantage of the opportunity to, to put the zoning along the, the new highway and go with that.
Well, and you currently have billboards on that section.
Right, and there's plenty of businesses that they can use as qualifying locations.
Right, right.
The reason we're having to do this is because this being a limited or fully controlled access highway, it would be, if a, unless a business was built on a service road, and you use that as a qualifying business, there would be no business along this highway. So at the intersection of 13 and 70, unless somebody comes in with a business that has a driveway going out to 13, there would be no business there.
And if we were- But I think it's retrograde for that, but it really does.
Yeah.
And if you're using that qualifier at 800 feet, right?
That's correct, well, that's there for us.
And for us. If you go and go under the rules of the state where it's zoned, then you no longer have the qualifying-
Correct.
You really need to do, unless we're going to wait 30 years until that's developed out, if you want billboards over there, you're going to have to zone it.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
The objective, we're, we're looking at it, this is kind of the same as the solar installations that we went through. We took, it took some time to iron out that, you know, but the main thing is that we are moving forward with this, and the people that has inquired about putting signs on their property, at least they know that we are looking at it and that we're moving in the right direction.
Okay, and to, on spacing, we currently, where we do allow, have 1,000 feet between signs. The state has 500 feet along freeways and 300 feet along all other highways, like US 13 or 117. And the planning board in this case is recommending to leave it like it is.
So we would be more restrictive in that case? We would be at 1,000 feet, yet the state be?
That is correct, of course, if the signs we're putting there are measured along off of the other roads, we, whatever road the sign is addressed off of, is what we would use.
Yeah, but I, you know, I was, I mean, right now, you're at 1,000 feet, you're twice the distance that the state requires, and I'd like to see us at the state level. Was there any reason why they wanted to leave that at 1,000?
I think they thought that the spacing that we had now, in using 70 with Wayne County, looking at US 70 there, and outdoor county, that the, the spacing was adequate as it is now.
What are Norah and Johnson doing, with their spacing?
Well, well, Norah, I think, just uses the, they don't have a separate ordinance, they just use whatever the state allows. So on 70 and 2, I'm not sure, I 40, they don't, and the Clayton bypassed it at all.
I just got, I feel like Joe is, I think that might be, we need to look at that 500 system with the state. And, and my point is, my few, the more head, Johnson, you've seen those signs there on 70, where there's one right after the other, and the impact is just, and those, I would have thought it'd been less than 500 feet. I mean, it looks like they're about every 200 feet apart, but evidently, they must be 300.
They probably are 300 or so.
So I, I'd like to see us go to the state. Just from my point of view, I, I wouldn't, I'd like to be as, as simple as possible, and if it's good enough for the state, it ought to be good enough for Wayne County.
The next is, the largest sign that someone can have here is 400 square feet. The state allows an area up to 1,200 square feet for a sign.
What's the square feet on these new signs that's got the large?
I don't know, yeah, because of what we're allowing.
Well, I read you 1,000 feet off the highway, and you wanted pretty big. I don't have any problem with that, but if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, on our ordinance, it includes the trim, am I correct? Let me find my, here. I need to, and, I mean, I'd like to, to us to be where the state's at, is what I'm saying. I don't know why we would want to include trim. Let me, let me find it here. I, total area, piece of N400 square feet, countable, with entire extensions to the sign or any advertising message or copy on the sign structure. Outdoor advertising company on the border or trim shall, as part of, and I don't know why that would be, because most 400s, 40s, not include, or you got the name for it, not including the trim.
Yeah, Sean, I think they- Find it differently, I'll leave it-
Yeah, whatever the state's-
Uh, part of the measurement, still leave it at 400.
Yeah, four hundred feet. I got no problem with the four hundred feet. The problem is for us standard type thing, then we're going to address that.
The, the, anyway.
Typically, what I mean, how many feet does that get?
Uh, Doris said it may be a foot or probably.
You know what, I'm going to order up here at the bottom. It does.
We've looked, the planning sheet, a boundary to the top of the sign, what DOT says is fifty feet above the pavement and what's the maximum height of a sign should be fifty feet, uh, adjoining it, because usually the ground at the same level, but if you had a situation where the ground beside the highway was much lower, even if they have a sign that you can see from, sign would be sitting there with, if you were applying, if it issued more of in the, where that would make a difference. So we're, the adjoining highway, fifty feet up to, yes.
It could be. That's good.
Under the size that I'm talking about, from the, of the sign itself, maximum length forty feet, date because of how it has a maximum height, I believe.
Mr. McChang, please, can you accommodate that? Why should it be square feet? Is that right?
What you were possibly saying is that we would have, the maximum height for a sign is, is, would be, if it's ten and a half or forty, if that's the sign itself and we don't measure at the outside, then we're, we're into the weight increase in the sign facing, not the trim to get, come up.
So you're going to change the description of how you measure, just like square footage?
Four hundred would be the sign face itself, not the trim.
Okay, okay.
When you say maximum height, are you talking about from the ground?
Yes.
It's only going to be ten and a half feet here?
No, that's the sign itself.
Sign itself.
The sign, the tallest, the tallest sign could be is fifty feet.
Oh, fifty, okay.
But then the, the, the top ten and a half of there.
Oh, I see.
Uh, would, could be a sign, you have about a forty foot.
I understand now. I, I.
Step around five hundred feet from a church, school, or public institution, three hundred feet from a residence unless it's waived by the residence. State has no, so if somebody joining property, that you live there, say, have at it.
I kind of like the state's idea.
I agree. I, I agree. Um, I, I'm not understanding that.
This was also the unzoned areas.
Right.
Uh, to have, keep signs out of residential areas, to zone, copy residential use, so that should take care of that.
And it's still be, the current highway system erodes like seventy as is now?
Well, what it would, existing US, from a church, chain sign, church.
Why would there be an objection of a church of having a billboard within five hundred feet? I don't understand that.
And, and it may not be for the church. It might be.
Well.
But it might be for somebody else.
A school, okay, a school.
I don't, I don't be as much of a problem with the sign being there as what's home design.
That's right.
If I say, we, we, Kate, once, sometimes it's not the problem.
You can't regulate free speed, you, as you have a space.
There's, there's still allowed signs for you.
Yeah.
Board, yes.
I think that's probably the reason we have it there is, the church may not care if they're, they're advertising on that sign, somebody says, praise Jesus. The church is going to say, that's great. But if they're advertising a sign, praise the devil, the church may have a problem with it.
It's rude. I don't know that I can think of a, where there's a church anywhere.
Well, there's not really.
There, but this, this is, remember, this is a countywide ordinance.
Yeah, I understand.
That covers roads like US seventy, where you out there and say, New Hope Friends, right there, the, uh, the church, uh, high rise, high praise, Tampa North Old Seventy West, churches are all along seventy.
That's right. I got too focused on my issue.
Question, but you are allowing by not a church. So if you're going to have it, you ought to allow it to be waived by every entity.
Very good of that.
Either or, either or.
Yeah.
Keep it, then it to be waived. That's right.
Time approached, specifically, that's going on our property.
It's mere the three hundred foot part too as well, because if you, if you're going to offend one, you're going to offend the other. Or if one likes, those are going to like, you know, like it.
Say that again, sorry.
Mere the three hundred foot for both.
Did I have the five hundred or three hundred?
It may as a matter of being somebody.
I don't, so between, uh, it's going to be a fin to as a church, a school, public institution, so just have it three hundred feet, but it can be waived. I mean, that's, it is football field.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This, or.
It's about eighty-eight.
But we're back from, I'm more concerned, I'm, I'm concerned that situation because it's on the participation. A lot of, a lot of people don't report to commission board or the planning board and this kind of thing. I, I'm of the opinion that her feet needs to, the way, for the public. It says, uh, church, school, public institutions that are near and dear to the citizens of our county. Uh, I'm, I'm of the opinion that we need to leave it like it is, uh, unless we get a lot of pushback from citizens that want a change. They have that kind of pushback.
We, we've never had anybody that had, uh, now, once we get to the last thing on this, we're going to have something that may take care of all the issues.
Well, I, I, I don't know. Fortunately, I had to pay you the proceeds.
Okay.
But I, what I'm saying is, is that why change it if, for the sake of changing?
Well, if I, I just want to ask. Because in my opinion, it, five hundred feet for cer- certain things, three hundred feet from a residence, but the resident can waive it, but the church couldn't, the school couldn't, the public institution couldn't. So if you, you're going to allow it for one, y'all.
If I, if I can see, hear you right, Mr. Mayo, and you have a different of a thought as to what that three hundred.
You can find, but allow the waiver.
I'm just sitting here thinking that, that this could go a variety of people, just say, and that means that more a sign was, I mean, not bother somebody with school and, hell, only because, unless it's been advertised as much as possible, but we still need to protect all of them. If you're certain, then, well, our parents are pulling out when they see that, oh, what might decide, no, we, we probably need to schools and other, because you have a wider variety, more raised about, who's going to live their lives, thirty miles and it's only one person, and then he said, well, I don't mind it being within fifty feet of my house. That would be his decision, but we still must, the population, the people.
All right, would you do me one favor today? How's some of these streets in Goldsboro there, seeing how close they are to schools, churches, and so forth? But here. I, I'm not, whatever y'all decides.
You could just leave, solve the problem.
Hell, I.
Three hundred, and then you decided, well, then that can get.
We're trying to come up. General requirement describing the lighting, it's a double faced. Uh, the state just has descriptions on, uh, planning boards.
I got on this on, I have some steel structure, tell them billboards, the rickety type ordinance.
Yeah.
The requirement in regards to, and the lighting, um.
Yeah, I don't, neither, neither of us or the state have any, you know, the, the kind of structure other than the electronic signs.
But if you, if you're going to do it, now would be the time to do it, wouldn't it?
Okay, if you want to have it on a pole, now would be.
There's a possibility you're going to get kicked back on, sign companies.
No way. I own them at this, go that. I, I think, try to make sure that they're very, that they look, you know, they're, you know, nice, but they.
They're late.
Every year.
And, and.
Make sure the sign is in good repair every year, they lay on, getting the dilapidated condition.
Okay, I can buy it.
Uh, obstruction, signs cannot interfere with traffic signals or signs, uh, the state says the same. He's, we have initial permit of fifty dollars per square feet for each sign, annual renewal of twelve cent face, there's initially a renewal of six.
Yeah, but what?
I don't, the, the journey.
I don't know that.
I could find out. I, I don't think, well, nor, they don't have an ordinance, they're not charged that stuff though.
The spec.
Right, and that's what this covers.
On a four hundred math, right, we, twelve cent, you say a square foot?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's that.
Forty-eight, and if you say that times two.
You're forty-eight dollars.
Okay, forty-eight dollars will be one side and if that.
It's sixty dollars. Well, that's pretty, pretty reasonable then.
Uh, permit is if you're on a, age of, uh, well, the state just spaces them a thousand feet apart, uh, the same spacing that we.
So our change.
Copy you've got, but we, yes, that's, remember, to, it's, it's a bit, the ordinance has been amended to include that, but what you've got is on.
County senses not any determine that. A lot of places they've done that face, that can be a distraction.
Like a struggle.
Yeah.
I think that was sort of the market standard.
It's insane.
Eight, eight.
Four times four.
But that's what I saw we did.
Well, and so the one that's, by McDonald's, that course, one, yep, nine all three of them, they put it up, but that was.
Well, mine is hundreds of thousands of dollars. That definitely is an addition to the tax rates.
That's correct. The last section here sort of will cover some of the things, um, under variances, variances of section three, rotation, as it's like, for, it's not, it's not applicable, brief, it's, it's, it's something about the location where maybe we can't describe every issue, the planning board.
So you may apply, so you, you're going to remove what's written?
Right, which would be applied through the, uh, and that, that would cover all the issue of, it may be what it wanted, not okay. We've got it. That may be sitting right at, okay with it, because it's around a curve or something. There's, there's issues that can't cover every detail when you're trying to write an ordinance. That's why you have to allow variances. But, uh, we'll, we'll work on this and get back with the, uh, amendments, uh, to the zoning map amendment at the same time.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding you, if a company came in and they wanted to put up a sign that was larger, say it's a ten by forty-five, four hundred and fifty square feet, they could, before it could be accepted or denied.
I suppose so.
As long as they got options.
Y'all are in agreement, it's just like we did the solar, every time he's got it ready, view of session and work through the issue.
Good job, Sean.
Uh, Mr. Price, ought to have the same, I want to, or.
Of course, you know, through traveling, and, and next exit, travel rural area, you know, if that was used here for the traveling public that works with the county, just because they like the scenery, you made them want of signs every three hundred feet in that case. I think if it's around the interchange, I think the way we're doing it is allowing signs, um, in the zoned area, close to interchanges would be the way.
Of course, I couldn't imagine a sign company wanting to go where and put the sign up.
That's true.
Well, like when Willie Johnson led in, what is it, in Raleigh?
Yeah, yeah.
If you're going along seventy, or US seventy, and it's a, it's a big space between interchanges there, um, is that the best place for us there? Putting this in ahead, we can't regulate what goes on the set, structure once it's there, whether it's advertising a local business. We might allow signs every three hundred feet along US seventy and not a single local business is advertising them. And so you've gained money by the value of the sign being there, and the fees that we charge for our annual inspections, you gain that. And as far as trying to help out the local McDonald's or the, the local Olive Garden or whatever, there's, they, they've chose not advertise out there, and we can't make them advertise. But the Olive Garden in Smithfield, they say, travel twenty-five more miles, exit at eight, you don't even know you've just passed one.
And Mr. Chairman, the, you know, the purpose and intent, I assume you're going to reword that as well. Because the purpose of this article is to preserve and improve the roadside appearance along a highway in unincorporated Wayne County through the freeway. So, I mean, you're going to have to readdress the wording here, because that isn't the purpose.
Well, that's a good question.
Okay, work session is closed.
We did that, and let's.
Okay, no comments.
Mr. Pirelli. Uh, today I'm going to use my opportunity to make a comment to share a letter with, uh, my fellow commissioners, but more important, to share a letter with the public. Uh, this letter is entirely benefit for George Fodham, and the letter has been written by Lynn Williams, who, uh, you all know that was instrumental in working with the library situation. But I'm going to read this, uh, letter word for word, and so I'm organizing a benefit plate sale and auction on, for Friday, uh, twenty fifteen at the Boba Denning banquet hall on NC fifty-five west in Mount Olive. From forty-five, a Mount Olive Town Commissioner, glowed, a type of brain tumor in August. He has since undergone three brain operations and a course of chemotherapy and radiation. Fodham employed on and offered specialists. His line was working as a part-time dental hygienist at the time of his, they have a ten-year-old daughter, Georgia. There are many friends who know and love both George and Lynn who want to do something to help them, said Lynn Williams. Spokesome fellow who attends church at the, we feel could help. Family has, but it doesn't take long. We decided to stay before they reach a crisis point. George Fodham has been set up at Southern Bank. Donations can be taken to a Southern Bank location, and checks should be made payable to the George Fodham family benefit. Plans are for you, say, that's through only one, but five P M. Auction will start. We'll film C for the night, we'll, and Ben, on their violin, and we're lining up an auctioneer. We are seeking donations of auction items, including home, have enough items for both a live and silent auction. Tickets can be first purchased at several locations in Mount Olive, including the Mount Olive, Carnegie Realty, Team Financial Resources, Mount Olive Town Board, Mount Olive Chamber of Commerce, East Coast Service, Boba Dennis Furniture House. Anyone wishing to provide an auction item, contact Laura Strickland at nine one nine seven three nine eight for cakes, one nine nine twenty-six to sixteen for tickets, Crystal Jones at nine one nine two 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 four two, four three two two, and for general donations, you here and all the listening audience, to please come to Mount Olive and participate in this activity on the ninth. Uh, I crossed paths with George, did cross path on a, certainly on a week. Uh, he is his own man when it comes to concrete, and, uh, you see he and his crew out in the concrete, doing concrete yards, and he's on his, uh, earth mover, and see, uh, skill, all depends upon the leader being able to go out there and, uh, I'd be on my truck with my lawnmower was going to cut some back fields, and he's concrete, so I came in contact with him a lot. So I used my time today just to ask you to come on down to Mount Olive, everyone, uh, bring your pocketbook, eat some spaghetti, and bid on those items. Thank you.
Mr. Doherty.
About to. As I gain, look forward to the each.
Girl, we, we talked about that a great deal. Coming, I was a pool ten trip shooting champ, calling it magic. It's the same wig one.
Right.
I think so. We'll get to see that later. Got regional swim championships, March twelfth to fifteenth, that the Wambs is already fully booked. Uh, going to have the state championship begin this year in June, expected no less than two hundred contestants, and I'll be bringing family in addition to that. So, Texas Avenue, the rep, Texas tax revenue is at nine one five percent from last year at one point three million, and collections are up seventeen point one percent, and, um, from last, seventy-four thousand, seven thirty-nine, and these were September, uh, numbers, so things continue to go up. Other than that, um, there was a news release from, uh, Pat McCory's office, and I want to congratulate Detective Tom Flores. He has, uh, been appointed to the four-year appointment, social servant, to thank him for that. And yesterday, we lost, excuse me, we lost a hero, Al Green, council, Maine County deputy, and its community, and a US Marine, passed away. I'd call him a friend, and may he rest in peace.
Mr. Gurney.
Yeah, and, um, Mr. Payd also mentioned to the tourism council meeting last week about the Ag Center that we're trying to promote, and they were excited, thrilled, because I think a lot of them certainly use out there, so that poll eyes, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to missions that are for serving citizens in this coming year.
Mr. Chairman, could I, this meeting shows this week.
Good.
On that.
Good.
Mr. Bass.
Chairman, uh, due to the, pass these, um, just about the whole month, really, and, uh, and, uh, ended meetings that were scheduled other, or, uh, council days, just, uh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, uh, take, uh, my time today to, uh, so special district one, about twenty fourteen, and, uh, what's been, but I, I want to say that I knew Al Green, known him for probably over ten years, not as long, but, I, he was very active, uh, with veterans, served his country well, and he's going to be really missed. served his country well, and he's gonna be really missed, uh, at our, at our veterans' uh, get togethers. I wanted to take this time, as I mentioned, to talk to, uh, the board and the citizens of Wayne County, but before I do, I wanna ask our county attorney, uh, Mr. Parker, I'd like to ask you, um, are there, are there any, uh, statutes or rules that says that a, that an elected official, such as a county commissioner, whoever, uh, are there any rules that says that I do not have the right as a commissioner, any of us, to express our concerns and decisions that we make openly? In other words, are we allowed to vote no on an issue, uh, and not expect any repercussions to the point that it's just hurts that commissioner's, uh, ability to do his job and to represent his citizens? Are there anything, any ethics rules or anything that covers that?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so whenever, whenever a commissioner or any of us take a stand on something, then we have to be ready to take whatever comes after that, is that correct? Any kind of repercussions, negativism, uh, personal attacks, any, take it, is that correct?
General, at part, individual, not.
What about as far?
Well, number of the, per politics is, uh, is on politics.
A lot of pushback, apparently, how, my point is, is that, ask the citizens of Wayne County a question, forty people this question, month, what is the first to, either picks or politician? Okay, I thought of the same words you did. I thought of the same words you did. When I decided to run in twenty twelve for, for commissioner by district one, my message was loud and clear to all the citizens of Wayne County, but including district one, quote, "I am not a politician, but a citizen servant. I believe in a government of common sense, transparency, and integrity." Committee assignments for twenty fifteen. The meeting was held on December the sixteenth, that day, at about twelve forty-five, in the conference room over at his side, and Mr. Akok, and Mr. Daughtry, and myself were in attendance. And I guess this is where, this is where we're gonna find what our political side is, what our honesty side is, how transparent we're gonna be. But I ask Mr. Daughtry and Mr. Akok, why I was removed from the facilities committee and the W C D A committee. I never dreamed that, the answers that I got, I never dreamed that that would happen here in Wayne County. The Bible Belt of Eastern North Carolina, the reasons that I were given, I would never dream that it could happen. And I, as an elected official, would get the political pushback that was related to me. And what I'm saying is, is that the people of Wayne County, the citizens of Wayne County, I am appalled, I am upset, from the simple reason that politics pushback and the street name is dirty politics is acceptable by every public entity in this state and this nation. I am asking today that we, as a board, and the citizens of Wayne County, including the news media, civic organizations, churches, I am asking today that we put an end to political pushback that is unjustified, that causes a commissioner to possibly not be able to do their job as an elected official. I'm asking all of us to come together and say, Wayne County will not tolerate this. I know it's been the status quo since the beginning of recorded history for the United States of America. What I'm saying is, is that that doesn't make it right because we accept it. A few weeks ago, Governor Crowe, he released a video interview with David Crabtree of W R L, in which the governor reacts to a story by the Associated Press, highlighting the stock buyout from LendingTree. The governor said he was pushing back because his integrity, career, and family were attacked. He also stated, for these same reasons, that I am fighting back is because these reasons are keeping good, qualified people from the private sector from stepping into public service, quote. The past three years, I have represented district one and twenty-three thousand citizens in all of Wayne County to the best of my ability, honesty, integrity, transparency, I've tried to do those things. The committees I served on in twenty fourteen, along with the approval of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, resulted in a win-win situation for the citizens of Wayne County. Approximately three million dollars from the eastern region was brought into Wayne County with the board's help in order to help the municipalities of Pikeville and Fremont with sewer issues, Wayne County Genoa system, we're using that money for sewer repairs, there are other projects in Mount Olive and the city of Goldsboro, also to provide funding for the advanced manufacturing center that we are about to purchase. And with the, with the board's cooperation, after two years, the D N X subdivision in district one, my district, have or in the process of getting street lights turned on. And I appreciate that. My New Year's resolution to the citizens of Wayne County, no matter what the political side is of either party, doesn't matter, I don't, I don't, I'm against political pushback in any shape or form, there's no room for it in the political process, and that's why the citizens of Wayne County think of about two words when you ask them about what a politician is. My New Year's resolution is to continue to represent district one and Wayne County with honesty and transparency. I am looking forward to serving on the committee assignments made by Chairman Akok for twenty fifteen, the N C East Alliance, the Wayne County Board of Health, the Wayne County Social Services, the Wayne County Animal Control Advisory Committee, and of course, the Wayne County Industrials and Business Park Industrial Corporation, which by the way, nobody can remember in the last nine years that this board ever met, so it may be one that we might wanna consider taking off the list. So I am pleased and honored to be able to serve, uh, district one and the citizens of Wayne County, and if I am singled out, so be it, I've been there before. I will continue to state what my political beliefs are, and what, and I'm gonna stand behind my convictions, and it's not gonna.
Chair.
I don't necessarily agree with you on some of them, but, uh, that's our prerogative to, uh, have our feelings, I made the decisions on what I thought was the best for the county, and I'm sticking by that decision, uh, and, but, we will move forward in the county. And also, I would like to, uh, Mr. Payton mentioned, uh, losing, Mr. Al Green, uh, also, uh, the residents of Fremont lost a good public servant, uh, I understand, yesterday, Mr. Devon Jones was mayor for several years, and, uh, he passed away yesterday, had a lengthy illness with, uh, with, uh, I understand, cancer, uh, we want to keep his family, uh, in our prayers, and, uh, like Mr. Bell said, I did not attend many functions, uh, other than the parades during, uh, the holidays, or before the holidays, and, uh, was under the weather last week, so I didn't, didn't anticipate any much, but I want to thank all the commissioners for your hard work from, uh, two thousand and fourteen, I look forward to working with you in two thousand and fifteen, and, uh, we will move forward. That's the end of my comments. I move it, German.
Motion on four, we adjourn. On the favors of Senator Ryan, motion carries.